Good evening, we're gonna call to order.
Nancy Kupka?
Present.
Mike Davenport?
Present.
Sherrell Fuller?
Present.
Dan Nicholas?
Present.
Don Runner?
Here.
And Ella Flynn?
Here.
We have a quorum, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I heard you Sherrell.
Sherrell was there.
Okay.
I'm here.
Student perspectives. South.
Good evening. I remember a conversation here about a year ago, we talked about what we do for freshmen when they come to high school to prepare them, so I thought I would bring some of our students tonight to tell you some of the things that they do to assist us in preparing freshmen. So I'm gonna have the students talk through a series of when we see our freshmen in January at 8th grade orientation. They do a lot of planning in the summer and host a summer Mustang Mad Dash. They assist on the first day of school and then they work throughout the year during Mustang Way lessons. So I'm gonna let them describe specifically what they do.
Hello, I'm Mitchell Theal, I'm a senior, I'm the president of National Honor Society, vice president of Key Club, and a Mad Dash director.
Underachiever.
Hi, I'm Emily Mitchell, I'm a senior and at South I'm involved in Mustang Way leading, PE leading, National Honor Society. And I'm also a director, or I was a director for Mad Dash.
And Emily also carried me in French class the other day when I was there.
I tried.
It was a very difficult job.
Tried, that's the key, that's the key word right there, tried.
I'm Sarah Barber, I'm a junior, at South I'm involved in speech team, mask and gavel, Mustang Way leading, PE leading, Mad Dash, and snowball.
Hi, I'm Emma Laff and I'm involved with Mustang Way leading, Mad Dash, Friendship Club, marching band, and PE leading.
Should we talk about 8th graders?
Okay. Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay, so like a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we had like the 8th grade orientation night and so we had a couple different students. Yeah, thank you. Mostly like juniors and seniors and all of the 8th graders, incoming 8th graders, or incoming freshmen were split up by their last names and so we all came in and we answered whatever questions they and their parents had and we also talked about like things that we wished we had known coming into high school. So that was like our really first step to get them to transition and that's really the first time that they're exposed to the school if they don't have older siblings.
And so, for me in my room, I had a lot of students who were interested in activities, so I'm not necessarily an athlete, but the person I was with was and so we were able to answer questions about things like, oh, I also forgot, I'm in NHS so people were asking about that. Like what activities I do, like Friendship Club, like what are, what's the purpose of those and I explained that later in the school year there's, what is the name of it?
Mustang Fury.
Mustang Fury, which is, just said, I forgot about that. Mustang Fury is when all the freshmen go to, go to one of the gyms, like there's been, all the clubs are located in there so they know what they can sign up for and like what they can get involved with in the school.
Also for 8th grade orientation, as like a student, like the teachers give you like the basic gist of like what the math resource is and like what the English resource is, but as a student you basically tell them what the students use it for. Like for math resource, you might, it's supposed to be like where you get help from teachers, but most of the time students just go there to meet with like other students and like work on problems together and not necessarily get help from the teacher. Want to talk about Mad Dash?
Okay, so I mentioned earlier, I had the opportunity to direct for Mad Dash this past summer. And that's a, that was a pretty big deal for me because my mom's always said like, oh, you're such a, you're, you have leadership qualities, always use those to your advantage and so in being a Mad Dash director, that's a step up from being a leader and so our job was a little bit different and Mitchell was also one of the directors with me. And what we got to do this summer was we got to plan this entire event and it's kind of like a freshman orientation, but it's different because it's not as hardcore and like this is the play-by-play of what school is, it's really fun. When I was a freshman, I did go and I had the best time, I met so many new friends who I'm still friends with now and the point of Mad Dash is to make friends with people who aren't from your school. So freshmen are put into different groups and they're assigned different leaders, so Sarah and Emma, were you a leader?
Yeah.
They were both leaders. And so each of them, they have a specific group and then you do icebreakers with your group, you do games, you do a school tour, you do, you watch skits, you eat dinner with everybody. It's, it's supposed to be a really good bonding experience for people who don't know other kids from other schools because I came from a really small school, well, I guess not really small, but I went to Lakeview Junior High and that school was not very big, my graduating class was 125 kids, maybe. And so a lot of the friends that I had were just people from my school because that was my area. So then when Mad Dash came around, it was more like I got to meet all these new people and it's a really great opportunity to meet people that you might never speak to if you didn't go to that event. Because not all those kids are gonna be in your classes once you actually get to South. But as a director, what Mitchell and I got to do was we got to plan the entire event, so we got to pick the icebreakers we wanted our leaders to do. We got to create, what did we make? What was it called? We made the, we made a- Yeah. Yeah, we, we made a board game and it was each director got to take a couple of our groups and play that game and it was, it went pretty well for what we thought it was, it went pretty well, it was pretty exciting. But then, the experience itself was really fulfilling because it, it was really nice to see how when the freshmen first walk in at 2 o'clock that day, how quiet and awkward it is and at the end of the night, everybody's dancing together at the dance because that's the last event. And so the experience itself is really, really nice to have that, so yeah, do you have anything to add?
We, we do all of this in like rainbow tutus and like tights and stuff, just to like-
The outfits are ridiculous.
It's just to like make sure the freshmen aren't feeling awkward because if we all like wore like nice clothes and stuff, they would feel like it's so formal and they get uncomfortable, but if we do like this like cute little outfit and stuff, they'll be like, oh, it's, it's supposed to be a fun atmosphere. And also I'm like the fourth child of my family, so I've been doing Mad Dash for like a while because my sister was a leader when I was a freshman and then I was a director when my sister was a freshman. So it's kinda like you see like the whole evolution of how the program has developed and it's getting so much better than it was like when it first started.
Okay, so just like one quick thing to add, like Emily kind of touched on it, a big thing that we focused on at Mad Dash was the skits, so each director like went with another director, so there were two pair, or pairs of two. And they would come up with different skits and so we had topics like social media, getting involved, and being like ATOD free and I think that that's a great way, that's really valuable for the freshmen to be able to see what high school is actually like and like what choices you should be making. So like for example, I was in the ATOD skit and me and another Mad Dash leader were best friends, but she chose to drink in high school in the skit and I didn't and it shows how we both like strayed off like of our original path and like I stayed on mine and she had gone completely off the path. But then how she gets like redirected back on and we end up to become friends at the end and like it lets the students know how many resources they have available to them, like if they so end up like having issues or facing obstacles and like how that really helps them to like get back on the path that they want to be on and they know that from that one mistake doesn't completely ruin their high school career. So I think that's like another super important thing that Mad Dash focuses on.
So I was in the involvement skit. I myself was a crazy senior who was jumping around the stage as the freshmen were laughing hysterically at me. And so like my part in the skit, and I really noticed it with a lot of the freshmen, a lot of them are truly terrified of the upperclassmen and I think they can all attest to how we were our freshman year. And like having that skit, the importance of it was to show that the upperclassmen aren't meant to be scary people you have to avoid at all times. You can use them as resources and that they've gone through things and they know what activities they like and so it opens doors for yourself and so I really liked that skit and Sarah's was fantastic and the other one was, it just opens the freshmen's eyes to like pass the stereotypes of what you would think high school is.
Now we're doing Enter With Pride. So the next thing that kind of like correlates with Mad Dash is Enter With Pride, so that's the first day of school at DGS where all the upperclassmen go for the first half of the day and we go through our class schedules and get like syllabuses and things like that. And then this, the freshmen come afterwards and all of the Mad Dash leaders and directors stay and they help their students with class schedules and the leaders specifically see another group of freshmen and they help answer any questions they have. Like I know for my freshman, I drew a map of the school on the board since it's like literally just a square, but they were all so confused and then once I drew it, they were like, wait, that's so simple and I was like, yeah, it's not bad at all. And a lot of them have classes in like E233, which is like this weird, like looks a little sketchy, but like the study hall room and no one knows how to find it. Because like I had study hall there my freshman year and it took, I was probably like five minutes late because I had no idea where this room was. And so Enter With Pride is just like a great way to like get them acclimated and like I also think it's really nice because they don't see any of the upperclassmen, so like it's not as overwhelming initially. So they get that chance to like kind of just get their feet wet and like get used to their schedule without being like, oh my god, why are they all huge? Because like that's how I felt my freshman year.
No, exactly.
That's how they work.
Something else to add with that is after like we were in the classroom with the freshmen, we like, we then sent them out to their classes, but then each group is like assigned a specific corner around the school. So then you just stand there while the freshmen come up to you and ask for help, so they'll be like, where's this classroom? You either like guide them to like the next corner to help them, or you like walk them actually to their class, like to find E233. Like when I was, when I did a couple times, it'd be like five people come and say, where's E233? So we just have this big group going to E233 as like all together.
So one of the, so on Enter With Pride, as Sarah had said, we all stay afterwards to help out and so this year, my brother's a freshman and he's not like me. I'm more talkative and pretty outgoing and I'm pretty out there and my brother is nothing like that. So because I was a director, I was just kinda wandering around the halls, you know, looking for freshmen in case they were lost or anything. And so then I would go and find my brother and purposely embarrass him because that's what you gotta do on the first day of school when your sister's a senior, I had to do it. But I thought that that was really important especially for him because as I had said, he's pretty quiet and I know there's students who are outgoing and there are students who are more introverted and that's okay. There's many types of students out there, but Enter With Pride was definitely a good experience for students, the freshmen, to bond with some of the older and upperclassmen because we purposely tried to be a little more like, hey, how can I help you? What do you need? Is there anything I can do for you? Because honestly, these freshmen, even I tutor freshmen after school and they still don't ask me for help and I've been working with them all year, so it's, you kinda gotta get in their face and be like, you know what? Let me help you. So that, Enter With Pride was a pretty good way to do that because now it was more us in a smaller, more relaxed setting rather than running around in tutus at Mad Dash, so.
I have to restart Mustang Way.
Do you want to start?
Yeah. So the thing that all, I think all four of us do is we're all Mustang Way leaders, which Mustang Way is just like our PBIS, like lessons that happen once a month. But the purpose of the Mustang Way leaders is to push into freshman classes, or mostly freshman classes. And just assist with the lessons that they see friendly faces of, oh, you were my Dash leader, I remember you, you're someone I can talk to later on, like in the hall or like you'll feel more comfortable answering the questions because the topics aren't us running around in tutu topics, it's more like, we had our red ribbon week topic. Our last one was about our philanthropy project, which is Erica's Lighthouse, which is about teen depression and anxiety. And then we're doing another one, I think, next month, it's about Respect Week. And so like having like these topics that aren't necessarily talked about in the general setting of the school, ran by upperclassmen, when I was a freshman, I thought that was really cool to watch. Because it's always awkward to have your teacher talk about awkward topics and awkward conversations and so it's having like that opportunity and I'm watching it now, being a leader. They don't, my classes necessarily talk, but they're more open when I'm the one talking or the other leaders I lead with talk versus their Spanish teacher, so that's how I see it. Any questions?
So first off, thank you all of you and all of your classmates who volunteered to help the incoming freshman, that's great, wonderful. What advice would you give to the next generation of students that are gonna volunteer to do what you just did this last year? What advice would you give to those juniors and sophomores that are thinking about volunteering?
Yeah, so I think the best advice is put yourself out there and that, don't be afraid to like be in those opportu, like to get into those opportunities because I kind of always liked leading, but none of my upperclassmen friends really did it and so I was kinda pushed by a teacher. And they're like, oh, you're really gonna be good at this, so like just taking that first step to get into those activities is, makes all the difference. I don't remember which activity I joined first, but then I mean like four others like it because of that one activity and like having that. My sister's an 8th grader this year and so like I know, I want her to be able to do whatever she wants and having like that expectation from your upperclassmen of, if this is something you're interested in, here's how you get into it. And like having those opportunities, at least for me, because I didn't know where to start, like having people like us who come and talk at these types of things open other people's eyes to what we can do and the ways we do it.
So my first leadership position was like being a vice, the vice president of Key Club, but like it all started based on like the president when I was the like member, she like encouraged me, which was, it was Danielle Houston. She told me I was a sophomore, she encouraged me to actually like push myself to actually go for this leadership, leadership position. And then by the end of the year, like I ran for it and actually got it, which that inspired me to like do more and then now I'm like running a lot of other clubs because of like the push. So basically you would have to push like, like push the freshman, because like you could see the potential in some freshmen, so if you just like nudge it a little bit, then they'll like get their, the ball rolling and they'll become better.
I would, I would definitely agree with that, being able to push the freshmen because, so I might have mentioned earlier, I'm a PE leader at South. And that is a program where one of the PE teachers, Mr. Terry, you write a paper about your leadership qualities and what you do that makes you a leader and then you get picked to be in this program. And I was lucky enough to be picked when I was going into my sophomore year, then we had training sophomore year and junior year and senior year, you actually lead. And part of that leadership first semester is if you lead for a freshman class, which you can lead freshman through senior. But if you lead for a freshman class, which I did my first semester of junior year, you help the teacher pick out what students you think would be a good PE leader. And I remember two of the students, two of the, you pick three, there's normally two or three leaders, you each pick three people. And two of the kids I picked actually did end up becoming PE leaders. And so leadership qualities are mostly obvious in students when they're put into a setting of a group. So you can tell which student likes to take charge and which student likes to sit back. And so it's really important to push that quality because I think to be a leader, there's a lot of thing that, a lot of things that go into that, but to be able to push that is really, really important.
Also, also one more thing, we're not just saying leaders are like loud, like very vocal people, there's also leaders who are very quiet and like, because like there's some leadership position isn't really a lot of talking, like for a Key Club, I'm just gonna say it's like treasurer, like they don't do a lot of communicating with the actual club itself, they do like a lot of like counting. So like there's those people who are like really organized and like have like the potential like just keeping everything going, like those are good leaders too, it's not just people who can like speak the loudest. Any other questions?
What, what do you think, is there something that freshmen in general are like most afraid of coming in, they're most concerned about?
The amount of people in the school. The size.
Homework.
Homework is another big one. The size and homework, I would say, are the biggest.
Because we, I'll just come forward. Yeah, because me and Emily like talked to the same group at the 8th grade orientation night and like most of the questions we got were about like classwork and like homework load, but also like the size of the school because like for so many people, it's a huge shift especially because like we have like a decent amount of students that come from like really, really small private schools and then like also like Lakeview is pretty, pretty small and like my middle school is pretty small too, so like when it all comes together, it can be super overwhelming for a lot of students and so like that was a big question that they asked a lot.
I sure could've used a Mad Dash when I was- I was definitely afraid of getting a swirly.
What's a swirly, Mike?
No, it's definitely not a thing.
I hope it's not a thing.
I'm at Chicago Public Schools, we didn't have swirlies.
I feel like that's, it's definitely not a thing.
My sister threw pennies at me.
Done.
When does Mad Dash occur?
Mad Dash last year was I think August 12th, so it's usually like that Saturday before the first day of school.
And what kind of participation do you guys receive, I mean percentage-wise, of incoming freshmen?
Like a lot. Like a lot. More than I feel like you'd think because a lot of parents like make their kids go and like you can tell that because like some kids will just sit there and they'll be like, my mom made me come. But then like they end up liking it and they end up thinking that it's like a really valuable experience.
Are you just blasting emails to parents of incoming freshmen?
We call them.
I think it's in the packet.
Yeah. We call them.
I'll say something. All of like the Blue Crew leaders, which are some of the higher leaders in the chain for it, we're all told to call like 10 people. So I remember calling them and getting like four responses of my 10 or 12. And so it was mostly parents who are like, oh yeah, what is this? And so like we put ourselves out there and so like I know with myself, I happen to know like three people on my list and so I kinda forced them to come. They'll be mad, they were mad at me, they ended up having a really good time. Like I wanna say just about Mad Dash, I'm in the marching man, so I had band camp all that week. That was from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. And then that next day, that Saturday, I was at school at like noon till 9:00. And so you think that like that day would be, I'd be so tired and didn't wanna do anything. I had some of the most, that was one of my favorite days of summer all year because I get to run around like a nut in a tutu and be crazy and scream and have fun with all these freshmen and be able to see all their smiling or upset faces because their mother made them come. Or yeah, terrifying, like I sat next to, so like how we started at this time unlike, unlike the rest is it was like an assembly type fashion. I sat next to these like 20 boys who looked like they could be, they could, they could care less about what was gonna happen. So I'm like, I'm gonna sit there, I'm gonna sit right next to you. And so like eventually, like, I knew who these kids were because they all went to my middle school. They went from being really upset and not wanting to be there to like having a lot of fun with the activities that the directors chose for them to do because how it used to be, because none of you guys won't know this. It would be all the leaders and directors running around in a circle screaming and you walk in, you're like, what is happening? I don't wanna be here, why, why did my mom make me come? And I think for like that experience, and I think that was the purpose of why they chose it the way they did, was to have you like ease into it rather than be seeing people screaming running around in tutus.
To build off what she's talking about, Mad Dash was basically run where it was built, like the leaders would stand in a circle and the directors would be in the center and we'd just be shouting chants and stuff. But this year, it was like kinda like showing that like there wasn't many active freshmen when we did that, they would all just stand off to the side. But this year we decided to do like an assembly style, just to try it out and see what happens. So basically, we had a tunnel where all the leaders would stand and then like they would like, the freshmen would be pushing through the tunnel and then we'd be cheering, like getting hyped up and then be music playing. And then we'd make them sit down in the bleachers and then leaders would go and sit next to them and like dance and stuff to get them going while the directors just like spun around and stuff and we'd have activities like out, like it would be basically like an assembly, like see like when an assembly be like here at DGS. And it gets them like all going and people actually wanted to do the games we were actually doing.
One of the complaints I've always heard about Mad Dash is that it's only for freshmen because people have so much fun and like it so much that they wish they could go again. And I know a lot of people who've become Mad Dash participants because of that, leaders or whatever. In fact, a friend of my daughter's who went to South just had like three or four days as her, as she started college, I said, oh, how was orientation? They have all these great social things. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't Mad Dash.
How about that? Yeah, what you're doing is so important.
So they need a second Dash.
They need a second Dash, maybe a third.
Become leaders, so they can do.
So thank you for using your leadership skills, we're glad and you will be glad too.
For sure. It's valuable in all aspects of life, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student Board Member, questions and comments? Student Board Member?
So I'll start with, sorry. Lots of North students and programs have had state appearances recently and upcoming state appearances, so we've had a few divers, wrestlers, gymnastics. Speech team was at state recently, ILMEA for musicians was at state. DECA, I think it's upcoming this weekend, they have state and chess was at state recently, so lots of good accomplishments there. This past month was Black History Month at DGN, or I think in general. And I attended the African-American reading with Dr. Thealy when he shadowed me. And it's really, it was really powerful and to see the passion that these students are able to convey and give their message across with poetry and song and literature and just a really powerful experience. DGN Spring Musical is this upcoming weekend, it's Beauty and the Beast, so I'm really looking forward to that, lots of my senior friends have big roles this year, so that's exciting. A little feedback on the flexible learning day, I think overall I've heard mostly positive feedback. Everyone has said they prefer that to having extra days at the end of the year, so I guess that's good. I think a lot of students said it was, it kind of equaled out to what a normal day would be like in terms of homework or like a workload because some classes, they got lighter assignments, some classes they got heavier assignments, so it was pretty equal in terms of what they would have on a normal day. And not every class had like a concrete assignment, some teachers assigned a task such as like researching for an upcoming project or assignment or paper or something like that. But then you might have a heavier math assignment if you had that in social studies class, so it balanced out to what a normal day would be. And none of the assignments really that I had or most students had were due the very next day. So that was really helpful, especially for kids who had travel and plans with their family and such in advance since it was a holiday originally and was a holiday anyway. Lastly, I just wanna touch on, obviously North's gone through quite a few, or quite a heavy past two weeks. So I just wanna talk a little bit about Beth Dunlap and her impact on our community. She was a light to everyone that knew her. And while her death, sorry, was unfair and senseless, her light is like still really, really bright at DGN, I can see it in her friends and her teammates and her teachers and her classmates. It's absolutely amazing to me how much love and strength has come out of such a terrible tragedy. And the DGN volleyball team is currently selling these shirts. That say Beth Strong and on the back it says 18 for 18. And that's been a really cool way that they've been able to honor her memory is the 18 for 18 because that was her volleyball number. And so all the proceeds for these t-shirts are going to the Beth Dunlap 18 Fund, which is gonna be used to help underprivileged volleyball players who, and give them the opportunity to play the sport that Beth loves so dearly. I've really never been more grateful to be a part of the DGN student body and just the Downers Grove community in general. The regional championship for the boys' basketball team was such a good example of how our community has been able to come together. And it was such a beautiful tribute to Beth's side as a competitor and, sorry, and as an athlete because that was such a huge part of who she was. And on behalf of the students, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Schwartz especially and our administration for everything they've done. And their willingness to help our student body while they've been healing as well, so it's just been a really tough few weeks and I just wanted to thank them for that and that's all I have to say. Sorry. That's it, any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you all. That was well said.
Very well said.
Thank you.
I just wanna say also that the regional basketball game was amazing.
Yeah, it truly was.
You know, they dressed up in red as well and the energy in the gym was amazing and it was felt by the North High students and staff. And it was just really nice to look out and see so much red and support. Phenomenal job of reading about Beth and we had 18 seconds of silence and it was a really moving moment for I think everyone in the gym, North and South side. And I would also just mention on Wednesday when we played Willowbrook, Willowbrook students also did a red out. And their student section actually made signs for our student section, Beth Strong and you know, one conference, one family, and brought it over to us at halftime. And so, you know, as Ellie has said, as horrible as it has been the last couple of weeks, those moments, right, transcend the ugliness of that day. And I think the students are feeling that from a lot of people and so is the staff and it's been really appreciated.
Yeah. 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Textbook recommendations?
How do I follow that with textbooks? Hey everyone, I'm here to present some textbooks for you. Just a quick reminder, before I get into the two books, I just want to remind us that we had a change in policy last year. So our past practice was that we would bring books for- So our past practice was that we would bring books for proposal. And then after that meeting, we would display them publicly out in the foyer for 30 days, ask for public comments, and then come back after that and ask for approval. We changed our policy last year because when we evaluated our policy against press policy, we found that that 30-day window wasn't required, mostly because state law already requires us to make our instructional materials available to anyone at any time upon request. So we didn't need that 30-day window that was there. So with that being said, I'm here tonight to talk about the two proposed textbooks. And then if there aren't any questions tonight, then I'll be back in two weeks and I'll ask for approval at that point. So we have two textbooks that were asking for. The first one is in AP German. They're requesting Denkmal Second Edition, which is from Vista Higher Learning. What put this course into a textbook proposal process is that the book that they have right now is an online book and it's not available any longer online. So they had to decide, do they want to go with the newer edition or do they want to choose a different textbook? So they chose a different textbook in this case. And then our other book is Introduction to Teaching. They selected, our teacher selected Teachers, School and Society: A Brief Introduction to Education. That's by McGraw-Hill. Two reasons why they are proposing the book. One is because their current book is from 2004, so they wanted a newer edition. And the other is that it's a dual credit course with COD and so they wanted to use the book that COD has. So that's why they've proposed this textbook for us. So it's a really light load this year, just two books, but that's what we're proposing. So I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll see you in two weeks.
Student fees?
Here it is, it's right in front of me. Here's Mark, copy of Mark's memo that's also in the board packet. Since we talked to the board about this last week, is that when we were back here?
Yeah.
We have received a couple of parent comments, the boards have received a few as well around the family fee for athletic events. So we started discussing that a little more with the administrative team today. We're doing a little more research. We may be amending that recommendation, but we're doing a little more homework before we come forward with that. But, you know, that's why we do this well in advance, so the community has an opportunity to provide feedback. So we've gotten some and we're going to, you know, look at all of that and perhaps tweak things a little bit. So, anything else, Mark?
No, I mean, just send it around the family pass. That's the only piece that I saw any, I saw the one feedback was forwarded to me, so there may be others. And if you get some, I'd like to see and get the ideas. You know, we're trying to think through different ways to accomplish the needs at the building in terms of managing that part of it as well as meeting families' needs. So we'll have a recommendation, I think, for the next meeting.
Yeah, and you'll probably receive something, obviously digitally before that, to let you know where we've landed with this.
Just to summarize the concern.
I had people reach out to me on that. Who said, you know, they have multiple kids and multiple activities and they're going to end up spending hundreds of dollars on attending events. So they utilize it quite regularly and they would be upset if we did change the policy.
So we're trying to find a good, happy medium between the other challenges we had with the old family passes and those concerns from our parents.
But don't we have to make that decision relatively soon?
Yeah, we'll bring it to the next board meeting. But between now and then, we'll.
We'll have tweaked it and decide.
Yeah, we'll send you some, digitally some updates as to what we're thinking. And the families that have reached out to us, we'll let them know what we're thinking as well so that they. So if anybody has concerns, ideas, whatever, please direct them my way so that I can, you know, dialogue with them about what their concerns are.
How many family passes do we sell every year? Any feelings for that?
So we don't have that data right now, so I mean, do you have it?
Oh, they're each looking.
We just looked that up, yeah.
I looked it up earlier tonight, about 350?
Really? That's all?
Yes, 211.
North is about double of what South is.
236 at North and 118 at South.
Really? That's all? I thought there would be more.
Well, because it's only for varsity and it's only for sports that we actually charge admissions, so some sports, we don't charge admission.
So I had the reverse reaction. I thought there was quite a few. And so it's, obviously this change would affect several people.
Yeah.
So I'm glad we're looking into it a little bit more.
All right, so that's where we stand with that. Any other questions on fees? All right. What do we have next?
Master Facility?
Build bid progress? All right, so in your board packet is an extensive list of all of the bid packages that are out there, which you're going to have a lot of information coming back to you real soon. Now remember, the ones that are contained under the guaranteed maximum contract for the master facility plan work, there'll be informational items for the board. We'll have a few of these, like asbestos and a few of the other ones that sit outside as owner's costs in the guaranteed maximum contract, which the board will then approve. That being said, Jim had a few other updates for you related to these.
Just quickly, you don't want to come over here and park on Thursday at 1:00 PM, all that coming in, so it'll be kind of crazy here.
Oh, darn.
I knew you were coming over, Terry. Just quickly, on March 18th, we'll bring this bid results to you in an update. We're also going to bring the February 14th, first MFP bid as an update. On the 18th, the asbestos will be brought to you for an award of contract. April 3rd, we have another MFP bid that will be opening. And I'll bring that to you on the 15th business meeting of April as an update. And then capital projects now has been moved to April 4th. And I also will bring that to you on the business meeting on April 15th. So we had to push back a little bit on the capital just to get it in and get some more people interested in. We were going too fast. We moved it one week. We'll be fine with the capital projects in April. That's still early.
Quick question. Why weren't the building walkthroughs mandatory? Why were they optional?
A lot of times when you make the building walks mandatory, then you'll lose a lot of the bidders that might want to come in. They might not be able to make it for any reason. We try to, that's the scope review, that's really critical. So we leave it non-mandatory so we can really open it up to as many bidders as we possibly could.
Does that diminish any of your confidence though in a bid if somebody didn't come in?
Not from, not from my perspective because we really do a serious scope review with the company prior to even remotely giving them a contract. So we go through everything. Many of them will come in and understand, you know, contractors we have in the past, understand their billings, look at those drawings. I got it. I know all the areas. I just did work there for three years. So we, like Richmond and Electric, they do a lot of work for us. HVAC, a lot of work for us. They're not going to want to send people over to go through the walkthrough. If they have questions, they send it over. And then obviously, at the bidding, we, if they're a little responsible, but we're going through every detail with them and make sure they understand.
Thanks.
It's probably something you will be doing internally, but from a board member's perspective, it would be interesting is to see, okay, in this, in this group of bid packages, we were over budget by X or we were under budget by X. And keep a running tally so that we can see how we're doing and how we're progressing under the Gmax. Because I know there's contingencies. And we've, and we're going to talk as a board as far as how we're going to utilize those contingencies, whether we're going to bond out for the full 136.6. Having a running tally of that information would be very helpful as we proceed down this path over the next couple of years.
My goal is every time I'm giving you an update from an MFP, it's going to be per a budget that's being created. So I'm supposed to get one this week for Phase A, Phase 1 of MFP. And also for asbestos. So I'm even taking it a step further. I think every outside cost, every owner cost, I want to bring, I don't want to sit here for an hour and give you all the details of every bid. What I want to give you is we had good turnout and altogether, we got 28 packages. This came in where we expected to be, or we're way over, or we're a little under. I want to be able to give that information to the board as we go along. It's critical. Asbestos as well. We have a certain budget for that. That's one I'm a little worried about more than the MFP. I think we'll, I think the first round on the 14th, it was concrete steel excavation. I think we did pretty good. This one on Thursday is huge. This will tell the tale of Phase 1A, A1A.
Yeah, with 35 packets, yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is it. This is a biggie. But that's exactly what I want to do. I don't want to bore you with details, I want to give you a bigger picture of it.
Yeah, that's what we need. Thank you.
Master Facility Plan Progress. Today, we really started digging in with the administrative team on furniture budget. The furniture budget, if you'll remember, there's $5 million allocated for furniture within the project. Now, furniture includes stuff like this, but it also includes equipment that we might need to put in the space. So in, for example, in the ceramics labs, kilns or, what's one of the other things we're looking at?
For equipment?
In culinary arts, baker's racks, you know, weren't.
Radio room.
Radio room equipments. So there's, there's a variety of equipment and furniture in these spaces. A lot of that initial, you remember, budget forecasting was done off of square footage, wasn't done necessarily off of design of that space. So right now, we're in the process of working with the architects around transitioning from a square footage cost to an actual, what furniture needs to actually, in equipment actually needs to go in our space. What fits, what do those pieces look like? And some of our spaces, what can be reused from before and doesn't have to be brand new, what needs to be brand new? So we're working through that exercise now so we can forecast out the next three phases, or all three phases, and make sure that furniture and equipment, everything we want to and need to do in those spaces fits within budget. So I would imagine within the next week, we'll give the board kind of where our initial numbers kind of sit, knowing that we got a lot of work left to do. But we're beginning that, that exercise. The other area where we spent a lot of time is loading dock at North. As you know, after the, the only comments we received from the public during the planning commission was around the North loading dock. I've been communicating with a representative from kind of the folks on Prince Street around some of their concerns around that design. We've gone back to the architects with some of their concerns and have redesigned some of that space a little bit. Of course, it doesn't want to zoom in here, but, so we've made some changes to that space, including landscaping, docks, signage, those kinds of things. This is a draft rendering, there's a lot of changes on this still that have to be made to the final image because since then, the landscape plan has come in and a few of those things. But in communication with our, the neighbor that served as the representative for the other concerned parties, they feel like we have really been responsive to their concerns and have answered or addressed the concerns that they have. So feel like we've made some progress there to be good neighbors.
I'd like to say too, their concerns became our concerns.
Right, absolutely.
They pointed out something very legitimate and we agreed and we've responded.
All right, that's it around Master Facility Plan. Nancy, you had something you wanted to?
Yeah, I'm aiming on E, which in Jim's case is five. So I, you know, we've been talking a lot about school safety and we've been talking a lot about, we're making a lot of changes in our schools related to school safety. When we were down, when Mike and Hank and I were down in Springfield, we were talking about some of the traffic patterns outside of North and South and some of the difficulties therein. And so I called Tom Rugio, who is the president of the Board of Education for District 68. And I live down the block from one of his schools. And I said, Tom, I'm calling you now as a board member, not representing 99 at all. I'm calling you as a community member. If we were interested in theoretically getting together a group of school boards to take a look at impacting legislation related to traffic patterns around schools, do you think there would be any interest there? And he said, you know, Nancy, it's a good thing you called me because I happen to be in Springfield and let me get back to you. So he called me last evening and I talked with Hank this morning. And in fact, there is some interest in school boards working together. And with the Illinois Association of School Boards, DuPage Division helping us, both helping whomever would do that, DeMolinaro specifically to help get, bring the different districts together, and Ben Schwarm, who is their legal guru to help navigate some of the legis, with, and talk with some of the legislators. So I did talk with Hank about this, this morning and wanted to put it out to the board. Is this something we as a board would be interested in pursuing?
What, so what are you proposing?
So my proposal is to, to talk with other boards, other schools within our county, within our area to be defined, to look at some maybe common sense upgrades to some of the traffic regulations around our schools and work with the legislators to see if we can't get, get whatever those changes we would ultimately recommend made into law. Maybe things like dropping speed limits near schools.
Low 25? Or? Well, high schools aren't subject to those speed limit restrictions.
Okay. It's 30 in front of Maine, it's on Maine. Maine is 30 right now, right? In front of high school, is it 30?
Yeah, it's 30 miles.
It's 25?
But if you go down further towards the, if you go down further towards, down Main Street, there's a lot of changes in traffic patterns that really slow traffic down through downtown. If you go through, I drove around this weekend looking around South. I went through to many of the grammar schools in Woodridge and in Downers Grove. You know, a lot of these schools are on busier streets. Even some of the, there was a, I'm on Nextdoor, which is a neighborhood blog, and there was some discussion today about the fact that some schools have white stop signs which indicate where you can drop kids off, but they didn't know you could drop kids off and kids are being dropped off and it's just very confusing. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity here for us to maybe improve some safety around our schools. And I think it's worth putting the effort forward to bring, bringing some of the other, our other districts, both very close to us or even within the county, together to talk about it.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
For doing this. I mean, this, this really embodies kind of this spirit of, some of my comments last week when we first started talking about this, is it, looking at holistically, you know, what does, what can we do? And not, and not just in one place, but in all the, all the places all around the schools. And, you know, there are all kinds of things. I know, I, sometimes I'm on, on a road that, especially with grade schools, right? You're coming up and there's a, there's a flashing yellow light that alerts you to during certain times of day when you, the speed limit has to come down to 20 or 25 miles an hour or something like that. Boy, I'd love to see something like that on Main Street possibly. I mean, there's just a, there's a number of things that could be done. I know we talked a little bit about, you know, pedestrian bridges, those sorts of things. Those take, you know, if, if we do it, those take time. And what I want to know is are there some things that we could be doing, you know, that won't take nearly as much time? Common sense things that we could do. And it certainly affects other, I mean, this is not just a District 99 issue. We've, we've, you know, we're acutely aware of it right now, but it's, it's something that's shared. And so thank you for making, you know, taking that issue.
Is there anybody who doesn't think this is worth exploring? Let me put it that way.
No, I, I'm all for it.
We already have a shortlist that's been provided us from community members over the last few weeks. So a lot of the suggestions we got were some of these practical changes around speed limits, signage, striping, those kinds of things have come in from the community that we can immediately start with.
The only thing I would say is, don't we, I mean, we already have, we're members of Lend, which is a lobbying organization for DuPage County schools. Wouldn't it make the most sense to raise this in that arena?
Yeah, to work with them.
We, no reason why not to use that arena instead of.
It doesn't have to be exclusive, I'm just saying it could be all, but, you know, I would imagine we would want to utilize that.
Pull those folks in.
Tom has a broader role too than other, other than just. Tom has a broader role, too, than other, other than just, uh, District Sixty-Eight, right?
Oh, he's president of the, uh, Dupage IASB.
So there's some, there's some reach there, too.
I assume once we got, this might be a good way to bring some community members together to work on this, uh, through the school boards, but I imagine, once we get to the point where we're proposing something, we've moved through all the branches of the alliance, so Illinois Association of School Board, Illinois Association of School Administrators, um, what am I forgetting? IASBO.
Administrator, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all four branches of those professional organization, Lend.
Everyone, yeah.
To, to make that, those proposals actually work their way through legislation.
So this will be some work to it, um, and Hank feels that we can, we can take this on, and I'm certainly going to help in, as a community member, so if you have no, um...
I'm, I'm all for it.
And no one has any reservations, we'll reach out, we'll, I'll reach out to, uh, to Tom, actually, we're gonna see him on Wednesday at the, at the meeting, um, and then with Dee, and we can, uh, reach out to Lend and whomever else and, and, and start this ball rolling.
I like it.
Thanks, Cheryl. You wonder, you're still there. Okay, we're gonna move on to the, uh, reception of visitors for public comment. This is the opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to District Ninety-Nine. Anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we're gonna move into closed session for the collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. We will not be returning for a vote, uh, so there's no reason to stay out once we go into close. I need a motion going to close.
I'm moved.
Oh, go ahead, Terry, I'm sorry.
Before we do that, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to Pizza Wars.
Oh.
It was just last Thursday.
Oh, God, it seems like it was forever ago.
I know, doesn't it? It does. And, uh, just, I want to thank everybody for coming and for helping us. It was just a wonderful event. We had close to six hundred, uh, people coming to the event, and, um, just thank you.
It's good pizza. And the winners were?
The, uh, it was Tortorichi's.
Again.
Thirty, three years in a row? How many?
We're, we're not talking about how many years in a row. But, uh, but, uh, I was in the counting room, they did win by a lot, so.
Blue Malattis with best crust and Papa's with best sauce.
Is that, is that?
Yeah.
You know what? I didn't hear the, the whole thing, so, but anyway, thank you, and, and I know I'll be talking again at the next meeting about how much we raised and, and all that good stuff, because that hasn't been published yet, but thank you all.
Well, let's all remember, well, you're welcome, thank you for doing it, and let's all remember to frequent those pizza places.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and I think there were coupons and things, and, you know, and, and I'll tell you, um, Maxim Printing.
That's true.
Did a fabulous job on this, and I don't know if you all kept yours, but it is beautiful, full color. I mean, they did an outstanding job, and they did it in kind, so.
First-class event, Terry.
It was.
Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, but anyway, now we can go into closed.
Now do we have a motion going to closed session?
I made, so I so move.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Mike and Terry.
Mike Danport.
Hi.
Trey Pevicich.
Hi.
Don Renner.
Hi.
Cheryl Fuller.
Hi.
Ken Nichols.
Hi.
And Nancy Cupka.